Good evening, everyone. Call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. Bishop Larry Radford of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints is here with us for our invocation. Bishop?
Dear Father in heaven, we're grateful for this beautiful country in which we live in, that has all the powers of freedom and strives for justice and equity for its citizens. We're grateful for those who have come here today, many that feel welcome here, and a spirit of humility, and those that will speak, that will have the clarity of mind to present their case well, that fairness and equity will abide for the good of our citizens and this community. We're thankful for the power of prayer and all the wonderful blessings we all have in our lives. In these things, we say and ask for them in the sacred name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Bishop, for joining us tonight. Roll call, please, Beth.
Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Vice Mayor DePorter.
Here.
Councilmember Magazine.
Here.
Councilmember Yates.
Present.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Tolles.
Here.
Councilmember LaGee.
Thank you. And we will start with economic development report, and I do have one. We did have our MAG economic development committee meeting, so bring you up to date on that. Phoenix is going to be home of a Swiss cybersecurity headquarters that will bring 300 jobs to the region. It's a family-owned business called Kudelski Security. We heard from the city of surprise, they gave a presentation about the benefit of staff inter-office communication. They did a whole study on this because apparently many cities have a problem with their various departments not talking to each other about important city issues. As I told them at the meeting, that's the advantage to a small town where we work in close quarters and talk together every day. We also have a manager who always keeps us in the loop. They really didn't need a study, they just got a visit at us. I attended the executive meeting of the League of Arizona Cities and Towns. Most of the meeting dealt with the legislature and the bills that are being heard right now, but we also got an update on this PS PRS situation that I've talked about before. The league has been helping the governor's office to work on this important issue that financially affects all municipalities. This morning, I presented my state of the town. If you would like to see all the accomplishments of your town in the past year and where we are going for the future, the presentation will soon be available on the town website. Thank you. Oh, yeah, I forgot, Andrew. Andrew?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'm sorry, I forgot to say that you are on the phone.
No problem.
Okay. Thank you. Andrew's our town attorney. For anyone who doesn't know, usually sits over there, so he's on the phone. Okay, we'll start with call to the public.
Mayor, we have two cards. First Judy Bechel, and then followed by Jody Knapp.
Hi Judy.
Good evening, Kevinoff and council. I'm Judy Bechel, and I represent the American Legion here in town as well as nationally. And we're here tonight to ask for your participation in an event that we are planning for the third week of May. May has already been declared as honor and remember month, and we are trying to, in association with that, bring the honor and remember flags to Fountain Hills and have a field of flags. Each one represents a fallen service member who has family in Arizona. We're talking approximately 340 flags, and they've now expanded to include honor and sacrifice, which our past sheriff Joe has already received an honor and sacrifice flag, and it encompasses both our police force and our fire department, first responders who have been killed in the line of service. And so they have a new flag for them also. And what we would like to do is have a field of flags at the park for the period of May 14th through the 21st. We'll be having volunteers that will be setting them up. I've met with Rachel and with Kevin from the parks, and we're going to have it all laid out in blue staked before we set the flags up, but it'll be seen from our Veterans' Memorial so that the public, as they're walking around the fountain, can stop walking between the flags. Each one will have the name of a fallen on it. And then on 10 o'clock on Saturday morning, the 20th, we'll be having a ceremony at the fountain. We will have a color guard placing the flags, retaining the flags. We want to involve Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts and all of our civic organizations, the Elks, the Rotary, and have it a real community event where we can invite people to come to our town and see how beautiful it is and to also honor the fallen for that period of time. So we've put in the permit, and we're asking for a waiver of fees because it is a nonprofit, and we are looking forward to, hopefully, Mayor Kavanaugh speaking and reading a proclamation declaring it honor and remember month.
Okay.
So we look for your support.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Because it's call to the public, we can't respond to you right now.
Right.
But by you presenting this, we pass this along to the town manager, and of course you've already spoken to Rachel. So we'll be in touch with you shortly.
Very good. Thank you for your time.
Jody Knapp?
Hello. Mayor Kavanaugh and council, I'm just coming in support of what was presented by Judy. I think as a member of both the American Legion and the Fountain Hills Elks, it is really an opportunity for our town to kind of put themselves on the map as far as honoring our fallen. And I would just hope that when it comes up for a vote and when we look at the fees, we consider the fact that it is what it is. Also, there are no vendors involved in this. It's just a display of flags to honor. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? No. Okay, we'll go on to our consent agenda items. We have seven. Can I get a motion to accept as written?
Mayor, so move.
Second.
Okay, and roll call, please.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Vice Mayor DePorter?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Yates?
Aye.
Councilmember Tolles?
Aye.
Councilmember Magazine?
Aye.
Councilmember LaGee?
Aye.
Mayor, 7-0.
Thank you. Regular agenda item first is consideration of appointing three board of adjustment members, each to serve two-year terms beginning on February 17, 2017, and ending January 31, 2019. I move to appoint Dan Halloran, John Kovak, and Nick Semen to serve on the Board of Adjustment, each to serve a two-year term beginning February 17, 2017, and ending January 31, 2019. Did I get a second?
Second.
Okay. And any speaker cards on that? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, 7-0.
Is anyone here, Dan, John, or Nick? Ah, there you are. Thank you very much. Thank you for volunteering. We appreciate your service to the town. Okay, next is presentation by J2 Engineering and Environmental Design, LFC, related to the town's Adaro Canyon Trailhead design. Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, as you're aware, this is a project that has been on the books for many, many years, and it's exciting. We're coming to a point now where we're very close to finalizing this. It is now in 100% design. There's been a great team that the staff has been working with, and this team has actually been with this project for a long time. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Mark, Mayor, our community services director, who will introduce the team, will then go and proceed and give a presentation on the design and the configuration of the Adaro Canyon Trailhead.
Thank you, Mr. Grady. Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, I just wanted to make a couple of comments. Tonight is the first opportunity, I think, many of you will have had to take a look at the conceptual drawings and the renderings that have been prepared for this particular project. As the town manager indicated, the original plans through 95% were completed in 2005, excuse me, 2000, yeah, 2005, goes back a ways. The intent at the time was not only to develop a plan that was workable with the commission at the time and the council, but also one that would provide us what an estimate was going to be so that we could assess development fees in keeping with that. So that was the main reason for doing it. I've had several people ask me, why did you do it so far in advance? And that was the rationale behind it. So it helped us establish what the reasonable development fees would be over the period of time. The project is currently estimated by the architect to be slightly under $2 million. The good news is our budget is slightly over $2 million, but it's extremely close at this point. We are in the process, as the town manager indicated, of finishing up the concepts for the 100% drawings. We provided our comments from the staff back to, along with the sanitary district, to the consultants. They are now taking those comments and making adjustments to the plans accordingly. They are due back for us to take out to bid on March the 3rd. So to use a rec term, we're rounding 3rd and heading for home. Bidding will take place through mid-May, and then our next step would be, assuming that we're within budget, come forward to the council in June, and construction is scheduled to start on or about July the 1st, when construction money is available, and is expected to take anywhere from six to nine months, which would potentially finish the project as early as December, but no later than March. I'd like to introduce the people that have been involved in this project, J2. First is Jeff Engelmann, also Kevin Wallin, both from the firm of J2. And at the end, we will both, the consultant and myself, if you have any questions or comments, we'll be glad to deal with those. With that, I will turn it over to Mr. Engelmann.
If I could just say a word first, and that is, we're fortunate we have the chair of the MMPC and members of the MMPC, the Preservation Commission, they're here as well. We're trying to do a twofer on this, and this was a unique project where we actually included Mr. Meyer throughout the entire design team meetings to make sure that there was a connection between the council-appointed, you know, commission, and then he would also report back to the commission meetings on the progress on this project. So I thought that was a unique thing. We don't typically do that, but this was, I think, a unique project, and I think it was great having him as part of that process. And I'll turn it back to you, Mark.
And as you indicated, the updates to the commission took place at each of their meetings, and it was done by the commission chair.
Mayor Kavanaugh and council, it's my pleasure to be here this evening to basically take you on a little drive-through as I've set this up, a slide presentation of the Adaro Canyon Trailhead.
Could you just identify yourself with the record?
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. My name is Jeff Engelmann. I'm a principal with J2 Engineering and have been fortunate to have been working on this project since 2005.
Thank you.
So the first slide, if, yeah, okay. Just to get everyone oriented to where the trailhead is actually located, if you drive up Palisades and then turn on, not Adaro Canyon, apologize, yes, you turn west, and you can see it circled on this map in yellow is where the new trailhead is actually located. MCO Properties is currently developing the Adaro Canyon Development, which sits south and east of the current trailhead. So there's a delay. Okay, so the master plan, J2 was fortunate enough, as I mentioned, we started it in 2005 and finished the master plan in 2006, as Mayor had indicated, to assist the town in development of a cost estimate so that fees could be arranged to build the eventual project. This is the master plan that was submitted and approved as part of that 2005-6 effort. So where we are at currently as of plans that were submitted and under review, the first thing that you would see when you drive in, circled in yellow at the end of a cul-de-sac that would be developed by MCO Properties, is the Adaro Canyon Trailhead with a town of Fountain Hills logo. The materials that are used are going to be used throughout the site, so we'll introduce them here at the beginning, which are gabion baskets, which are rusted metal baskets that will be filled with rock material that is basically processed on-site. And on top of those gabion baskets sits an I-beam, rusted metal I-beam with brushed aluminum letters that are pinned onto that to give you a welcoming. This sign is also lit from below so that you can see it at night. The gabion baskets and things are shown in the upper right-hand corner, shaded in the reddish color. The next slide that you would see when you turn into the trailhead project would be the entry gates. One represents the sunrise, the other one represents the moon. Obviously, sunrise, it's open, and it closes at dusk. So those are represented on these structures that are again constructed of the same metal I-beams and gabion, supported by the gabion baskets. The artwork on top is a silhouette of the McDowell Mountain Range created through rebar that is bent and welded into those shapes. The gates will be manually operated by town staff, as I said, closure at, or opening in the morning and closing at dusk. So those are the gates that would welcome you into the site. Once you pass through the gates, you will climb steadily uphill to the parking area. The roadway will be a colored concrete roadway because of the steepness of the grade that we're dealing with. It will have a tine texture to it for gradation and, of course, for stability of automobiles on the steeper slope, and that's indicated by the brown color of the roadway as you enter the project and as you leave the project. The roadway is split at the very entry monument by a landscape median that will be composed of desert plant material that is salvaged from the site and replanted in the medians, as well as everywhere else around the site. That roadway will lead you up to a more level parking area that will be cut into the hillside, but below and behind the adjacent mounds and rock outcroppings. All of the grading efforts will be revegetated with salvaged surface soils. So what that means is the top one foot of existing material will be scraped to the side and remain in windrows for the contractor to scrape that material back up the hillside when the road and the parking areas are complete. The boulders, as I mentioned, any rock that is salvaged will be placed around the site as well as used in the gabion baskets that enhance this environment. The granite material that, if it's not sufficient, will be supplemented with granite material that matches the desert pavement in the surrounding area, and then the area will be seeded with a revegetation mix that was specifically developed for this altitude and for this site, specific to the materials that we saw growing out there over the last 10 years. Then as you enter into the parking area, the parking area is an asphalt parking lot, but we've done everything in our power, again, to lower it below the adjacent rock outcroppings so that windshield glare, anything else that might be considered obtrusive to the development surrounding this trailhead are minimized. We also did a great job on our engineering aspects to save the native washes that cut through the site. One of them cuts right through the middle of this parking lot, and you can see that area that's in brown is the continuation of that native desert wash through the middle of the parking lot. We've also surrounded it with walkway systems that will be of the same color as the concrete driveway that you entered on, that would allow the pedestrians, trail users, visitors to Fountain Hills to get from one side of the parking lot safely to the east side where the public amenities for restroom, Ramada, and trailhead locations are actually located. The next image is several of the public amenities that will grace this site. This is the public restroom building. The colors selected for the building were selected from the native rocks that inhabit the site, from everything from the mauves to the tans to the dark browns are encapsulated in this building structure. The roof is made out of the same rusting steel that you saw on the entry monument and, as you will see on other elements within the site. The building was located so that it, again, had a low profile and was less visible to the surrounding development. The next element would be the picnic and public Ramada, which sits just adjacent to the restroom, but is nestled right in the saddleback of the two adjoining rock outcroppings. The view from this public Ramada space is phenomenal, and you can actually see the Fountain Hills Fountain when it's going off from this location. It is constructed of the same materials as was introduced earlier, the I-beam metal, rusted metal roof, and we are doing water harvesting, so any stormwater that falls on this roof is then funneled into a rainwater cistern that would water the native vegetation that's been replanted around the site. The next public amenity that you'll see are the public amenities for benches. These are the same gabion baskets that were used at the entry monument and are going to be used for the retaining walls with a smooth concrete cap on top. So those hikers and/or visitors to the trailhead can find some respite in a nice cool space under the Ramada or located next to the restroom building as they wait for patrons to exit or their hiking partners to come. The next public amenity is a billboard or public information kiosk. Typically, these include a map. You are here. If you want to do a two-mile hike, you can go this route. If you want to do a five-mile hike, you can go on this route. If you want to do a 10-mile hike, you can go here. There can be no burn signs on this sign, on this panel. These will be completely controlled by the town of Fountain Hills. Again, similar to the Ramada structure, it's built out of I-beam steel, and it does do water harvesting as well with the Ramada funneling that water into a low-water desert The next is really the gabion retaining walls that enhance the site and/or protect the native washes that we went to great extent to enhance and maintain through the site. These should not be visible to the immediate public, and that's the overall goal. They are built out of the same rusted metal fabric and filled with rock generated from the site itself and do a great job of retaining that level parking lot that we're hoping to develop up on the trailhead side. As I mentioned, the vegetation that we plan on using at the trailhead, a majority of it is going to be boxed in salvaged material of what exists there today, but there are some that we're going to have to supplement, and we are going to make sure that we match the native vegetation that is currently there now, composed of saguaro's, the various cacti, the palaverdies, and ironwoods that grace this site. And finally, in closing, this trailhead site gives virtual linkage to townhill residents to over thousands of miles of trails in this area. You can link from this trailhead into the city of Scottsdale. You can link from this trailhead into the Maricopa County Park system. You could link to this trailhead, and if you were so desired, could walk or hike all the way to Carefree. So thousands and thousands of miles lie at the footsteps of future and current town residents. And with that, I just want to express, again, my thanks for being here, and Mark and I, as suggested, and Kevin, are open for any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you. Great presentation. Questions from council? Okay, Councilman Yates?
Thank you. Thank you very much for the presentation and your perseverance, keeping on this project since '05, was it?
'05.
Yeah. I appreciate a lot of the design elements that you're bringing in, especially the butterfly roof on the restroom, because as many of us may or may not know, a lot of the Adaro Canyon houses and things mirror that same design, and several of the design elements that you're bringing in on the benches and whatnot. With all this design now, where are you budget-wise at your estimating? And again, I realize that we're not approving the actual work yet, just the design, but based on your estimate?
The current engineer's estimate for construction of this is 1.9 million.
1.9.
Using round numbers.
And if I may, Mayor, what do we have kind of allocated for this project all in?
My understanding is originally the development fees was about 1.8 million, if I'm not correct or incorrect, and then I believe it was 2.2. We added...
With some additional...
Right, we added $400,000 to a total budget of about 2.2. Is that correct, Mark?
I did write the specific numbers down. The general fund is considering up to 468,000. Development fees are at 1.8, which basically gives us a budget of about 2.1, or about 5% within the budget.
Madam Mayor, if I may, and then what amount of the total, the two stacked budgets, is use it or lose it, and how much could we, if we don't use it, could be used on other budgets?
So approximately 1.8 million is the development fees.
Is the use it or lose it?
Yes.
Fees. And where I'm going with this, obviously, and I appreciate the fact that designers tend to kind of estimate a little bit higher, but what, in your opinion, whether it be techniques, material, site conditions, could be done that we might be able to value engineer to get closer to that 1.8?
Great question, and we've thought those through as well. I think there's some real cost savings that may not be reflected in our engineer's estimate. Of course, we want to be very conservative in our approach. The fact is that we estimate our gabion baskets for a site that would come in empty. In other words, there's no rock to fill them with, so our prices would include, like if you...
Bringing in the material?
Bringing in all the material while we know we're going to be manufacturing material on-site. We also have vegetation included in our planting design, which includes some containerized material. The containerized material could be eliminated potentially from the overall site because of the amount of salvage that we're doing and revegetation efforts that we're doing. So potentially, that vegetation that you're buying in a plastic container would maybe not be needed once the site is vegetated with the salvaged material. So I think there are a number of those opportunities available to the town with the contractor to work on some of those VE items.
$400,000 worth?
I think, probably not 400,000, but a significant amount.
I'm teasing you. I'll go on later, but go. Thank you very much.
Councilwoman Brown?
Thank you. So the gabion baskets that you've got on the retaining cuts, if, I'm sure you've driven through what MCO has done over the last three years now, and in the event that we get into a natural rock cut where the rock face is actually natural and showing, can we eliminate those?
Absolutely. And that would be another, that could potentially be a very significant...
That would be a significant... But you would work with us as opposed to making us put these baskets up?
Oh, absolutely. If the baskets aren't needed, we don't need the baskets. If we don't need the vegetation...
We don't need the aesthetics of it, right?
No, you do not need the aesthetics of the baskets.
Just a natural...
When we saw the natural cuts, we were just up there again last Friday just to verify some of our design against what's in the field, and we're amazed at how beautiful the rock color is from top to bottom, which is very rare. Sometimes you run into those colici layers, and it's more like chalk. Not here in Fountain Hills, so...
Yeah, we take it seriously.
Hopefully, we do have contingency items built into that estimate as well for rock staining, for coloring, which may not be needed because of what we saw, but that's built into that estimate as well. So there are some contingency factors.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
Thanks, Mayor. Just two quick questions. On the wash, the active wash that goes to the parking lot, do we know how active that is? Do we, is it get pretty bad a couple times a year or not at all? Thinking about cars. I know when it rains, but not all washes are, I can't get to my car kind of washes.
We did do a drainage report, so we do understand the hydraulics of the flows through that wash, and the channel that's in between the parking lot and the connecting pipes have been sized for that worst-case event. So there should never be an instance where you cannot get to your vehicle in this trailhead.
And then along the lines of parking, how do we determine the number of parking spaces that are needed for this kind of space? Is there magic?
Once you build it, it will be used. We did our best to maximize the number of stalls in Phase 1, realized the master plan included an overflow parking lot above what the section we're looking at now, at a higher elevation. Currently, there's 50 cars shown in the Phase 1 area, and on the Phase 2, it was roughly around 20. But we did our best to maximize the number of stalls and minimize the footprint of the overall parking lot on the site.
It's a beautiful space, and I know from the very few times I've ever tried camelback parking was an issue for a long time before they built adequate parking. And thank you for teaching me my new favorite word, gabion. I say it all the time, but thanks.
Jeff, how does this trailhead site compare with the parking, number of parking spaces versus some of the others around the valley? 50, you... 50, you said it's 54?
50 on the first phase. Manager Miller. And that is comparable with what City of Phoenix has done at most of their other trailheads and other communities. Again, they are loved to death in many cases. And enforcement of the parking rules and standards is going to be an issue as it is almost every trailhead in the valley. Unfortunately, there's no panacea there.
Councilman Tollis?
Thank you. I think this is just a fantastic design amenities. You just did an amazing job with this presentation, so thank you for that. Couple of quick questions that I had. You had mentioned in your presentation that the gate would be maintained by staff, town staff, to open and close. Is this in some sort of way an electronic gate? And is there a technology that we can have installed during this that it will go up and down? And then there'll be, of course, emergency procedures if you had to get in there? That's one question. And then security. Has there been any thought in regards to security up in that area? Having cameras installed, having the emergency buttons if someone is having a medical emergency that you have similar to that you have in parking garages and public parking garages? What type of safety measures for the citizens will be installed in this design?
Great question. So the gates are manually operated. Originally, they were going to be mechanically operated with an electrical system of I-beams and controls out from afar. I guess we'll call it from City Hall. And those were eliminated for several reasons. A, budget was one of them. C, the lack of utilities in that area. Or B, lack of utilities in that area. And the commitment by the town, as they do on all of their other parks, to open and close them manually at dawn and dusk. There is a lock, a Knox box on these gates for emergency access that police and/or fire can open these gates at any time that they need. And that Knox box is located right on front and center of every gate into the park. In regards to security, the lot is lit. It has low-level lighting, LED lighting, so that at dusk, there will be a low-level light available for anyone that happens to be, got caught, couldn't get out of the, you know, the hiking trail soon enough. They can safely maneuver themselves out of the trailhead site. In regards to CCTV and that, the building is being wired. And we worked with the town IT department in regards to those facilities being added to the building. That infrastructure is available, and that process is being worked on. Did I answer all those questions?
The emergency?
Oh, the emergency button. We did not include an emergency button in this initial design, but that is a very good idea.
I would imagine that the cell coverage up there may or may not be very good. And I do think that would be a good thing to have.
Councilman Magazine?
This is very impressive. Thank you very much. Just picking up on the last comment. You know, you could have snake bites, you could have heart attack, you could have broken ankles. So I think doing something to make sure that people can notify under emergency conditions would be very helpful. I was particularly impressed by the fact that you look like you paid a lot of attention to low maintenance. Am I incorrect? Around the parking area, did you mention that that's grass?
No, there's no grass on this site.
I misunderstood. Okay, good.
It's a revegetated native seed mix.
Ah, okay.
It was colored green, but it's not grass.
Thank you.
Anything else, any other questions? Councilman Brown?
Will we have power on-site when this project is completed? During construction, the first phase? Or will we be waiting on power? I understand we will not have sewer. We'll be, and we won't have water up to the site yet. Will we have power?
Right now, I do not believe there's power up to the site. Mark?
There won't be? Okay, well, I would recommend then the, at least putting the conduit in for future electric gates, for sure, mats and all. Because that's a long drive out there on a long evening. I would recommend that for sure.
Very good question, Councilmember Brown. And I failed to mention that there, we do, when we programmed it for the electronic gates, we left in our plans all of the empty conduits from the restroom building down to those future gate locations. We actually left room for the pole that would be required to transmit the data to those gates as well in the plan set. So that infrastructure will be in place, which obviously, when you're working on a hillside in this kind of rock, you want to put in as much underground as you can at the beginning. So we've actually thrown in some extra conduits as well for the IT department's use near the restroom building. But that's a very good question. I apologize for not mentioning that earlier.
Okay, Councilman Yates?
Jeff, can you put that in as an alternate as well?
The gates?
The electronic?
Yes, we could.
Okay.
Oh, to actually run the wire?
No, I'm talking about when it's bid out, that that could be an alternate for, you know, a manual gate versus a, you know, electronic gate.
Madam Mayor, Mark, I believe this is for you. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I believe this is for you. Thank you very much. Two things. Mark, if you could go through the timeline again for, they're ready to bid out. When do you feel the package will be ready? And then kind of walk through the timeline again?
The packets are due on March the 3rd. Bidding would take place through mid-May. And then we'd be bringing the award to council at first or second meeting in June, which would give the contractor time to mobilize for a start date on or about July the 1st.
And Madam Mayor, if I may, the minimum qualification that you're writing into the ability to bid, has that already been written?
Hasn't been written yet. But typically, what we would do, the best example I can think of is the one that we did for landscaping. We need to have completed a similar kind of project in nature and size over the last couple of years preceding. And that's something that the town attorney typically writes into the agreement.
Okay. And again, just to emphasize, and we've talked about this both personally and on the dais here, is that we're going after the lowest qualifying bid, not the lowest quality, the lowest qualifying. We establish a threshold. If you meet that threshold, we want a tight bid and take advantage of the design and any kind of value engineering that can be done. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions?
I just wanted to explain to the council too. It's been a goal of mine and the staff all along to try to only spend the development fees on this. So, you know, if it needs to be a little bit more, and we'll have the resources there. But our goal is to really spend the 1.8 million dollars and not have to go over that. So that $400,000 can stay in the capital fund for possibly other projects. But that is the goal.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark.
Okay. Well, I don't have any questions because it looks like the council covered just about everything that I needed to ask. I just hope that we can keep to the schedule because council doesn't meet in July, and we don't want to lose an entire month. So we want to make sure that that hits that June mark. Okay? Randy, did you have something? No? Okay. Does anyone, since Bill Myers is here, does anyone have a question for Bill? He's open to any questions you might have concerning the?
Bill, I believe you wanted to delay this another couple of years?
Yes. Next century.
We got your letter.
I feel that if they have this thing, Bill Myers of MMPC.
Bill, is there anything that you feel that you'd like to add on behalf of the commission?
I believe so, yes. Actually, thank you very much for the opportunity to talk just a few minutes here. The MMPC has had a little bit of input on this. And I apologize to council. I didn't know that the MMPC was responsible for the design of this till recently. I read 9.5. And otherwise, we'd have a little bit more input on the thing. To be able to make it perhaps safer and less expensive because there's some, there's some good folks on the MMPC. We have two civil engineers. I've been in real estate and development for, oh, a long time.
Just say a couple of years.
And all the seven folks have seen a lot of trailheads, a lot of trails, trail builders. And so I think we, you know, I wish we'd had a little bit more input. However, from here forward, I think we perhaps can add a few things. I am just thrilled to death. I think this design is great. It was 95% done a dozen years ago. Actually, some of it a dozen years ago was 100%. So I'm glad to have it. And I, being in development, I think there's a real good shot we can have it done 2017. But I'm glad to hear you say that. I did have a couple of other comments. I didn't know if Mark had had a chance to ask J2 the cost of temporary utilities. Actually, more specifically, the cost to the town of not having temporary utilities up there. And I don't know if that's, if you had a chance to look at that or not. Because the cost of the temporary port potties and, there's going to be 668 plants up there. And irrigation system will be installed. And everything will be completed. But we don't have utilities for some number of years. And so we'll have to have port potties until then. And I'm afraid that the water truck squirting the plants is going to have too much water on this one and not enough on that one. And that would be some type of cost. So just a general idea and some ideas on how to eliminate that cost.
Oh, okay.
Well, that's about it. We have other comments, but I think this is the 50,000-foot level. And we can ask other comments another time.
Okay, does anyone have any questions for Bill? Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming up. Okay, if council has no more questions, looking for a motion? Councilman Yates?
Madam Mayor, I move to accept the design for O'Dear Canyon Trailhead as presented.
All right, have a motion a second. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Okay, we'll go on to number 10. Discussion with possible direction to staff regarding extending undergrounding of the existing overhead 12 KV lines farther northward, revising part of Salt River Project's Municipal Aesthetics Fund project, El Pueblo and Grande Conversion, and 69 KV replacement. Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, this is a project, as the mayor read, will actually underground some power lines, which will really help improve, I think, the aesthetics and the appearance of the neighborhoods affected by this. I'm going to go ahead and have our town engineer, Randy Harrell, give an overview of this project. And go ahead.
Thanks, Randy.
Mayor and council, SRP annually sets aside funds, designates them to the town. And they can only be used to improve the aesthetics of SRP's facilities. But the town gets to make the decision as to what they want to do with those funds in making those aesthetics improvements. SRP has provided us a proposal at our request to extend the proposed project on Crossing Grande to underground the 12 KV lines. Why isn't this on the board? So this first map shows the current and proposed project locations we have going with SRP and their Municipal Aesthetics Fund. Up at the top, you see the Caliente Wash undergrounding, where 12 KV line will be undergrounded there as well as we get rid of the poles. The second one down is the proposed project, which will extend the Crossing Grande. And then at the bottom is the undergrounding of the 12 KV that's currently underway at Shea Boulevard toward the east boundary of the town. would extend that undergrounding of Grande northward on El Pueblo and then over to Calico and underground the 12 KV in the red circled area. SRP hasn't designed this project yet, so we don't know where the lines are going. But that's the project location. This shows the typical wiring on El Pueblo. And basically, what we're looking at is getting rid of the four lower wires. The four upper wires will still remain. The 69 KV lines weigh exorbitantly costly, expensive to underground. And then the the last photo is looking north at the line to be undergrounded, looking towards Ashbrook Wash. This project will actually cross the Ashbrook Wash in that area. The funds will come out of, from SRP. But our account is currently about $43,000 short. So as you could see in the SRP agreements, we were responsible for 43,000 until the next SRP allocation to the town, which the last eight years has been $100,000. And we fully anticipate that that will be this year too. So we don't anticipate that the town will actually end up paying anything on this. But we do have to commit to that at this time. Happy to answer any questions on this.
Okay, questions? Councilman Yates?
You pretty much asked the other one. I saw this coming, and we had the state of the town this morning. And so I was already hitting up SRP, saying, "Come on, at a $650,000 project, we're going to give you 611. Can't you make something work out?" So again, we just commit. And then when we get it, would it be a cost reimbursement? And again, they're the contractor too. So I appreciate the fact that we don't even need drawings, per se. They just know that based on a linear foot or some sort of metric like that, that's how they come up with their estimates?
Yeah, SRP prepares the estimate in their, by their own staff. And they'll prepare, they'll do the work by their own staff. And, but, you know, they have a pretty intensive cost estimating section. It's invisible to us, but all we see is the bottom line. But actually, the agreement that we would need to sign actually says, you know, they'll tear up the agreement and write a new one after the town's next allocation.
And then, Madam Mayor, if I may, my only other comment is pretty big chunk of money to do, and it's a decent area. But does this put us in line with what we kind of anticipated as far as doing these types of projects throughout the rest of town?
Mayor and councilman, yes. SRP work tends to be very, very expensive, which is why we're glad that they're paying all the costs.
But I guess what I'm saying is, the money that we're going to spend on this project, are we in line with what we anticipated that our future projects would be? Or now we're going to have to wait about six or seven years until we can do the next chunk?
Councilman, certainly, we can do a smaller project. But yeah, I would anticipate that we're going to be two to three years at the very minimum before we can do another project.
Gotcha. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions? Councilman Lachey?
Thank you, Mayor. Randy, will there be any disruption to any residence property or any personal property?
Councilman, we don't know the SRP alignment. You know, whether it will go out in the street or behind the curb. Obviously, behind the curb would be less disruption of the street traffic into the pavement, which was just recently overlaid. But more disruption to the residents. So we'll have to, you know, SRP hasn't prepared any drawings yet. So we don't know that answer yet. Obviously, any construction has disruption to neighbors. But I wouldn't think it would be any more than any other trench going down the street.
Sure. Once we get our arms wrapped around that, I think it'll be important for our town manager to come up with a strategy to reach out, you know, communication strategy with those residents to describe what they can expect in terms of disruption. So thank you.
Councilman, I would say that SRP's public outreach has been very good on their most recent projects. And we've been very happy with it.
I agree with that. But nine out of 10 times when those projects occur, calls come to Town Hall. So I think we need to be, I think we need to be in the mix. So thank you.
Points well taken. Thank you.
Do you have any idea how long it would take once they get started?
I don't have that figured this time.
Not your best guess that I won't hold you to it?
Four months.
Four months, okay. Okay. Anything else? If not, I need a motion?
Mayor, so moved.
A second?
Second.
Any further discussion? And we had no speaker cards on this? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, 7-0.
Okay. Thank you, Randy. Discussion with possible direction to staff related to any item included in the League of Arizona City and Towns Week legislative bulletin or related to any action proposed or pending before the state legislature. Grady?
Yes. Council, Mayor and council before you tonight. We had some council members request additional research and information We had some council members request additional research and information on bills. And I'll start off with the first one, House Bill 2213. I believe this was Councilmember Yates that brought this to our attention. This is a bill that makes numerous changes to the government property lease excise tax, commonly known as GIPlet. It requires the government property lessor to calculate the GIPlet for each prime lessee, establishes a delinquency interest rate of 16 percent per year, eliminates the requirement that a county treasurer submit a report to each government property lessor regarding returns and payments received by the lesser in the preceding calendar year. This bill also eliminates the GIPlet tax abatement, which is really a key component that's being changed or requested to be changed. The amount designated for school districts and stipulates that lease rates for leases effective after January 1, 2017, are no longer grandfathered at the lower amounts provided in current statute, and significantly refine, redefines the definition of slime, excuse me, of slum or blighted area. The League has taken a position of opposing this because they feel that this is something that's a useful tool for economic development and municipal uses. It's one of the few tools that we really have in municipal government in the area of economic development. So I'll go ahead and, I know Councilmember Yates has some, some comments on this as well.
Just wanted to remind everybody that even though, I didn't want to get into the merits of whether a GIPlet's good, bad, or indifferent, but just the way the legislation's written, there are so many projects that municipalities across the state already have in place, as well as GPEC specifically, that this would negate all those the way this is written and just throw, quite frankly, some lawsuits against each other, because leases have already been written, deals already done, closed on, and then use this tool in the way this is written. So I was just coming to the council from a matter of, this is just not the right way to do it. If we want to look at this and have a discussion, I'm all for that, but as a council, I just wanted to say, I'd like our, our vote of opposition, or our letter of opposition against it, just from the standpoint of, it's not written well, and, and there's going to be too big an impact to the economic market right now. But I have no problem talking about the merits of a GIPlet.
Yeah. The only comment I have is, one part of this that I, I wouldn't be so far against, and we did discuss this at the League, is that, just to tighten up the definition of slum and blight, I guess that the legislator that brought this forward, his original idea was just that, because there were some areas that he felt that were more rich areas that were somehow slipping between the cracks and being allowed, whereas this is really meant for blighted areas. For instance, Mayor Mitchell of Tempe brought up that Tempe Marketplace actually sits on an old Superfund site, and they were able to use the GIPlets to get that cleaned up and look what they have. They have this wonderful shopping center now. So it shows that it does have a lot of benefit, but then, of course, there are the people that abuse it. So the only part of that that I would say is that, you know, we, we would agree to maybe tightening up the definition to make sure that areas that are given this, this GIPlet are those that are actually worthy of it, if that's, if that's okay to add that.
Right. Madam Mayor, if I may, the slum and blight, if, if an area has already designated that, you're absolutely correct, and any council anywhere has the ability to point to any area of their town and designated that. Typically, you kind of want a threshold, but to your point, there is no kind of governing definition of what slum and blight is. If somebody came to us and said, "Well, we have a project, and we want to put it up in this area," if they give some reasons and any council feel it, I'm, I'm not against that. I kind of think it's, it's a good idea, but I just want to share with you the processes that are already in place to designate a slum or blight in order to get this.
I wish we would call it something else other than, let's just say, "My town has a slum or, or a blighted area." So. Any other discussion?
Mayor, if I may, I just, I just wanted to suggest that I support the League's position and the position that Councilman Yates has taken with the contingency and clarification if we do a letter that the mayor pointed out with respect to definitions.
Everybody okay with that? Do you want to take a formal vote on it? All in favor of that?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
A second?
Give me a second.
Somebody, you did. Okay. The next one is 2179. Grady, did you want to do that?
Yes. Mayor and council, House Bill 2179 limits intergovernmental agreements to eight years and requires a majority vote of the governing body of municipality or county to extend the IGA. In addition, on effective date of this legislation, all existing IGAs must be reviewed and reaffirmed by a majority vote of the governing body. The League has taken a position of oppose on this, primarily because this is typically a local government issue and should not have any preemption at the state government level on this particular item. I know Andrew wanted to weigh in. This was an item he had asked. Andrew, did you want to add anything else to it?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, but there really are two issues with this bill beyond the 30,000-foot preemption isn't really appropriate in this case argument that Grady just outlined. The bill is currently drafted. It may call itself out as an intergovernmental agreement bill, but it is not. It has a requirement that by a certain deadline, that you bring back every one of your outstanding agreements and ratify each and every one of them after a public hearing. And, you know, for a community the size of Fountain Hills, that's a fairly substantial burden considering what you have out there. You can imagine, if you multiply it on the scale of larger cities, it could be requiring hearings, which were never required for the original adoption, on agreements in the thousands. And so it's not only that this is a topic that doesn't make any sense to municipalities, it's a topic that creates an enormous burden for affirming agreements that have no statewide purpose. And, you know, some examples of the agreements that we have that carry on a very long period of time are pretty simple. You have intergovernmental agreements for fire service, for instance, where automatic aid or mutual aid agreements require substantial investments in capital, and they have to continue on beyond a period of eight years in order for people to really make sense of the investments that are required to be a part of those agreements. A number of other kinds of agreements like that, water and wastewater, where one city is providing water and wastewater service to another, and it, the list just goes on and on when you start to talk about the number of things that are done by IGA. And we haven't heard from the bill sponsor any good reason for this, other than that when she was looking for a bill, looking for an IGA between the county and the assessor's office, she was, had a hard time finding it, and when she found it, she realized it was evergreen. And as you can imagine, that agreement relates to elections, and elections probably is something that should be evergreen until terminated. All the intergovernmental agreements we have turned to have an out for the municipalities if they ever decide they don't want to fund them anymore. But this really doesn't produce anything other than a lot of busy work for no apparent purpose at the statewide level.
That's enough for me.
Okay. Any questions on this? Anybody want to make a motion to?
Madam Mayor, so is it a motion to support it or oppose it?
No, to oppose it.
Oppose it.
Madam Mayor, I move to oppose this.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed to opposing? Okay. Next one, 2521. Grady?
Mayor, I'm, I apologize. I've been working off of my paper copy, and this was part of the amended agenda, and I not really prepared at this point.
Can I do it?
Yeah, if you'd like, sure.
Yeah. Okay. Because I've been working so long on this. 2521 is the TPT reform, and what this would do, this was put forward by Representative Regina Cobb, and what it would do is eliminate prime contracting. It would pool TPT retail revenue for the city 4 percent, take 4 percent of its total TPT revenue. It, and, and I know this, this sounds crazy, but it is. It's extremely complicated, 4 percent of its total, though now they're saying 1 percent. And it would go into some kind of a pool, and then it would go to our favorite, favorite division, the DOR, and somehow they would decide, depending on which cities are having development, the scope of work, and then there's something in there called, which one is more needed, they would distribute that money accordingly out there. It's, the League estimated that it's $150 million lost to the state, and between 120 and 140 to all the municipalities.
Move to oppose. Second.
I'm sorry to say that it, it passed at a committee, but, you know, there's still, there's still, it was a five to three vote, so it's still, you know, a chance to, to work with that and try to get it reformed, but I, as, as of right now, DOR is, remember going back how many years that they made the change, the first change? They have not even brought themselves up to a level where they can, they can do everything they were supposed to do. I mean, first they had to bring their computers up, then they fired everybody, then they hired everybody that could actually do this. So it is so complicated that, as, as Representative Jay Lawrence said at the hearing, so you're putting something in place that, first of all, the contractors are the ones, they have to actually self-report. So he thought that that was a problem because it eliminates TPT altogether. So, and then you, you don't have a system set up yet, but you're going to have DOR set up a system. You don't know what the percentage is. You don't know what the hit is as far as to the city, so how are they going to actually do a budget? And he, he tried to make them understand that we, we do our budget based on what we think is coming in, and this is, this is throwing a total monkey wrench into everything. So he was very eloquent, and he fought for us, but in the end, he, they didn't have enough votes. Councilman Magazine?
Beware of any reforms of the TPT. I know it wouldn't affect me directly, but they, I have to pay TPT every month, and they put out, they changed it to a TPT EZ. I had to hire somebody to do it for me.
With the EZ?
EZ.
Yeah.
I have to pay every month for somebody to do the darn thing because it's so complicated.
Yeah. And I also want to mention that, of course, immediately I called Senator Kavanaugh and said, you know, "Can you help?" And he, he did go around and really tried to lobby for us. So of course, it'll go to Ways and Means in the, in the Senate, and I have a feeling it's going to pass there. So all we can do right now is count on the League to work with the sponsor of the bill to make some changes. Councilman Yates, do you have something?
I was just going to ask, is it enough just to write oppose? Is there something else we can embellish on the obvious items that you just named?
No, because the League is doing all that.
Okay. Then again, I move to oppose.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I don't have anything else. Anybody have anything else on that? No? Is that a no? Okay. All right. So then we have council discussion direction to the manager and your, the, the ladies that came up that spoke about the flags. You, you'll be discussing that with them and Rachel?
Yes. And just to let you know, I had been briefed by the recreation supervisor about this. So I think the, the challenge, I just heard good news, which is working on Blue Stick, which will be able to get that site all ready, because they were going to have to put those flags about a foot, foot and a half into the ground. And with irrigation and sprinkler systems, that's, that's worrisome at Fountain Park.
So we're working that out.
Right.
Okay. So you'll be getting back to them in a timely manner on that? Okay, good.
Madam Mayor, if I may, also partnering on communication with the SRP project.
Absolutely. We will be being proactive in getting public information out on that.
Okay. So last thing is, council requests recent activities. I've got a couple of things I, I have to say. Anybody else want to? Okay. I just want to mention the ribbon cutting at the overlook at Fire Rock by Toll Brothers. Beautiful town home models available to tour. I went there for the ribbon cutting, and there were quite a number of people that were already getting to buy, which was really good. Concourse in the Hills in Fountain Park last weekend, over 630 cars this year with an estimated 15,000 spectators. The town had a tourism booth to show off our great town. I want to extend thanks to Community Services Tourism Parks for making it a great success. Thanks to Peter Volney, a town resident, for coming up with the idea for this annual event and for working so hard to improve it year after year. I also want to extend a thank you to Bob Bondurant and his wife, Pat, for once again helping me open the show. Having such famous race celebrities is a bit of draw for the event. All money generated goes to Boys and Girls Club of Greater Scottsdale that oversees our club here in town, and I think they made about $90,000 this year. So congratulations to them. That's a, that's a great, great win. And one more congratulations to the students who won the coalition-sponsored essay contest. It was a pleasure to attend the ceremony. As judges, we read the essays that are only identified by numbers, so it's really nice to see the students who wrote the essays that we chose as the winners. Great job for the students, and a special thanks to all those English teachers for their help to make this project a success. And that is all I have. Anybody else have anything?
Madam Mayor, how about the women's soccer team?
Yep.
Champions, third, second, third time, yeah.
That's right.
It's a dynasty now. On that note, Henry, good job. Can we invite them? I'm sure they're going to be coming anyway.
Of course we can.
Yes, and that was the plan. We were going to do that. And we're also working on, I, I don't want to take the thunder wave. Maybe Art has something he wants to add, too, that's kind of related to these great stories and news coming out of our Fountain Hills Unified School District.
Well, not sure specifically what you're referring to, but lots of positive things. And I was asked to be on the interview committee for head coach of the football team, and I spent the afternoon with Mike Berguglio and a number of other individuals that were in the interview process, four excellent candidates, and I'm looking forward to them making a final decision, but I think good things are coming.
Great. Okay. And our, can you work with the team to organize it to bring them here? No, to Councilman Tollis. You're our school representative?
To bring the team.
To our soccer team.
Oh, yeah. That'd be great.
Okay. Would you, would you act as our liaison to get that done?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay. Great. Anything else? No? Okay. Motion to adjourn. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?